Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the meeting of Town Council for April 22, 2020. We will have our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Mazur.
Our invocation will be a prayer for healthcare workers. God of everlasting goodness, you sent your Son among us to bring healing, peace, and reconciliation to our weary world. Be with all healthcare workers and their assistance in the time of this coronavirus pandemic. As we continue Jesus' ministry of care, renew them in mind, body, and spirit. Keep them safe from the infection and illness, and may Christ's healing presence flow through them as they serve those entrusted to their care. We ask this in his name, Christ the healer, who is Lord forever and ever. Amen. Please join me in an ash and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic before which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, I have a couple of announcements to start with, and then we will proceed with public comment. We're going to do public comment much like we did our last meeting, in that we will open the microphones at the beginning of the meeting for any people who have joined us to make comments. And then the town, you can also submit any comments to the town for the next five days after this meeting, and those will be forwarded to council members if you have any additional comments. A couple of more announcements is that all the towns, authorities, boards, and committees are going to be meeting by Zoom this next month of May. We're trying to kind of get things up and running, and until we figure out what the state is doing, and therefore what we're doing is with our social distancing, we're going to go ahead and start doing our video conferencing so we can just kind of get things rolling again. Also, I wanted to announce that we are taking applications for our junior council member, and please see our website for that if you're interested. We're going to be doing those interviews in May. And also, we have on the town website a senior recognition column, so that if someone that you know is a junior or, no, excuse me, a senior in high school graduating or graduating from college, that you can put their name in there and a picture of them if you want. And there are a couple of identifying questions. We know this has been a really difficult time. I feel so badly for the seniors because, you know, they've missed so much of their senior year and how things are supposed to be. So it's just our way of recognizing some of our McCandless seniors and giving them a little notoriety on the hard work that they have all done. Last but not least, I'd like to update you on the McCandless Cares and Shares food program. We, and by we, I mean a lot of volunteers. I would like to thank our volunteers. People gave so generously of their time, and they worked so hard, and they were really good about the social distancing. I'm very happy that we've been able to maintain those standards. So all of our volunteers have packed a total of 412 food bags, grocery bags. So the way this will work on this Wednesday, the 29th, is we will be passing out bags at the front of the town hall. There will be traffic patterns set up so that people, to try to help deal with the additional traffic, there will be signs there. It'll be easy to follow. There'll be people that are helping you get around. So we will be distributing two bags of food per car. So that is approximately, we have four deliveries, home deliveries, McCandless residents that couldn't get out, that we're going to take two bags of food to them. So that's approximately 200 cars that we will be able to give food to. So we are very happy about that. We are going to count the cars, so once we, looks like we're getting close to that number, people aren't waiting in line to be 201 and have wasted their time and not get any food. So any questions about the food share, any of those announcements from anyone in council?
No.
Okay, good. I've been very, it's been a great experience. I think it's going to be a nice help to the community. Is there, all right, this is the public comment time.
Okay, we have got Brian Danley signed up to comment. Brian, just a second here. I'm going to unmute you and turn your video on. All right.
All right, hopefully you guys, can you guys hear and see me?
Yes.
I'm sitting here by my creek, in case anybody's wondering, the one that I, you know, you guys keep having to hear me complain about, I guess. So I'm doing this a little bit for dramatic fashion here, but, you know, I spoke to this at the last meeting, and I realize this is redundant for some of you guys, especially like Bill and Bob, who, you know, we all appreciate what you guys have been trying to accomplish for us, but, you know, I feel like I need to continue to speak on behalf of the residents affected by irresponsible development upstream. So, you know, I kind of wanted to give an update since the last meeting, you know, when I spoke. Lindsay Williams' office, which I appreciate, she's, her office is usually very responsive to me, you know, with words. No actions happened yet, but, you know, we can hope. But she spoke to the ACCD recently about my complaint regarding Wexford Station, and for those of you that may not be familiar with it, it's that same development that I've been filing complaints about off of Brennan Road and 9 Penn. So they've been in development, and they've had, you know, I filed complaints as well as other people. They've actually been shut down at times due to not following regulatory standards. But anyhow, my most recent one was that big storm we had, I think it was March 28th, maybe, something like that. So I filed a complaint again because of all the stuff flowing downstream. I mean, it looks like mustard coming down the stream bank. And let me be clear, my biggest concern is the post-construction storm water flow rate. But that being said, all that sediment coming down compounds a problem as well. So, you know, long story short, I filed a complaint. I heard some really weak response to, from the ACCD, you know, where basically, I could tell that they never, they never really followed up. So I filed a right-to-know, you know, through some guidance, through some folks at McCandless, which, again, I appreciate. And they finally responded today, and I did send that to Bill and Bob and a few other, I think RJ too, I have your email address now too, so I'm sorry, but I'll be pestering you as well. But, um, so I, you know, I forwarded that along, and it was a lot of nonsense, quite frankly, and I sent that along, and I want to kind of fill in the other ward members, quite frankly, to what I'm dealing with here. I mean, first, they asked me if I wanted, you know, to talk to somebody about streamside vegetation, and, you know, why, I appreciate that. This is what I'm dealing with, if you guys can hopefully see. What used to be part of my yard, I lost now about 40, I'd say a good 40 feet and about by 12 feet wide. And now I'm looking at these cinder blocks and anything else I can possibly throw here to, you know, avoid further erosion. And this is just one person, this is just one yard. You know, there's, Bob and Bill are familiar with all of us residents that have been complaining about this for quite a while. So their response was, hey, plant some streamside vegetation, which I responded, that would be great, and I did do it, and it all washed away. I replanted it, washed away, and the only thing left is this willow tree that you guys can probably see that was in the middle, you know, that was about 20 feet off of the creek bank, and now it's practically in the creek bed. So, you know, so I responded with some of this along with the right-to-know requests, asking for the site visits that the ACCD is supposed to be doing for Wexford Station based on the violations that they've been cited with. And, you know, I got a nonsensical response again today, talking about abnormal rains, et cetera. And that's true to some point. There's no disputing that the rains we've had, we've had more rain than normal in the past two years, but that doesn't explain why when we get a half or three-quarters inch of rain over a couple-hour period, the creek that I'm sitting by is ready to overflow its bank. It's due to irresponsible development upstream for me, which is fine, I'm at the northern end here. And basically, we need something done. I'm really anxious, quite frankly, the, I think it's number seven on the agenda today. I was really happy to hear that, you know, I believe it's Bob, or I forget who is going to speak to that. I'm anxious.
Excuse me, Mr. Danley, I apologize for interrupting you. We have a five-minute comment time limit, and...
Did I hit five minutes already?
It is, I'm sorry.
Okay, can I just say one more thing?
If you'd like to add additional comments, you can certainly come to the next meeting, or you're welcome to send them in writing to all of council. We would be glad to have that.
All right, I guess the last thing I just want to say is, you know, we need help down here. It's obvious by what I showed you. I think we need to stop construction upstream until this can be solved, and the first thing we can do is increase the risers by reducing the flow rate, and that'll help all of us residents tremendously. So, thanks.
All right, just a second, I've gotten thrown out of the meeting. Okay, I'm back. All right, thank you. You said there was only one comment, or is there one more?
That is all that we've got signed up today.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Then is there, moving on to the rest of our business, is there a motion to approve the minutes submitted to each council member from the April 13, 2020 meeting?
No move.
Second motion, Bill Kirk.
Please, and I, please, if you can remember to say your name, that just helps us with the, sometimes the voices are a little garbled, it's hard to recognize someone's voice. So the motion was made by, I think that was, was that Trish?
No, Joanne Powers.
Oh, Joanne, okay, thank you, Joanne. All right.
Sorry about that, I should have said my name.
No, that's okay, that's okay. And the second?
Seconded by Bill Kirk.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. All right, there's been a motion and a second. Were there any changes or any additions that needed to be, that needed to be added?
Madam President, one, there was one motion that did not have a name associated with it, and I was the one that made that motion, so that could just be amended into the minutes. I think it was the...
What was it?
Oh boy, you're going to ask him.
Yeah. Well, he's looking for that. Bob, did you see where the Rustin Way language and that was kind of phrased?
Yeah, we...
Did you fix that?
Yeah, we fixed that, just cleaned that one section up to, so that those, that list of streets wasn't duplicated.
Okay, perfect, perfect. It just, it just kind of went on and on about Rustin Way, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so we got that cleaned up in the minutes then?
Yes, we just, we didn't, we eliminated that duplication.
Okay, thank you. All right, Bill, did you find yours?
Almost there, unless someone sees it first.
Okay.
Council meeting documents. For... Council meeting minutes.
Looks like maybe the appointment of the building code official.
Thank you, Jeff Frazier, thank you so much.
Okay, all right, good.
Okay.
Did you get that changed?
Yes.
Okay. Were there any corrections, additions, or anything like that from anyone else? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes with these changes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are accepted. Down to liaison reports, we tried to go through, one I know is not correct right away, but we tried to go through and mark the committees that didn't meet by saying no meeting. If there's still something that you want to add or need to add, then, you know, that's pertinent, please do, but we tried to indicate that on there, just kind of help people out. So activities committee.
No, nothing new. This is Councilwoman Cloonan, nothing new, and like you said, we are scheduled for a Zoom meeting May 23rd.
Okay, good, good, good. Community, good.
This is Councilwoman Woods, and the last meeting was actually on March 10 for Community Day. We did not meet in April. So just a quick update, everything's moving along, the parade has been sorted out, the car cruise has been planned, and several acts have been confirmed for Community Day. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The EAC did, oh, the EAC, I'm so used to having the EAC, I was speaking to it, I'm sorry, Angela, EAC.
There was no meeting in March.
Thank you. The Financial Development and Promotional Committee for the Heritage Center.
Joanne Powers, there was no meeting.
Okay, Joint Rec Board.
Chuck Mazur, as you know, we canceled a summer rec program.
Okay, right. Do we need to, Bob, do we need to keep the Joint Rec on here?
We don't necessarily for the rest of the year at this point. I mean, we normally do just for consistency's sake, but that's up to the council.
Councilwoman Cloonan here, I know part of the discussion to cancel this year included an interest from everyone to meet earlier and have more planning time for next year, so I would not want to see it canceled for the duration of the calendar year. It might be canceled until maybe September.
Madam President, I'm not able to hear you. Is anyone else having trouble hearing her?
I cannot hear her.
I cannot hear.
Let me try to mute and unmute.
I can't hear.
See if that helps. Oh, you know what, I think she may be frozen, actually. Don't see her in the waiting room yet, so if somebody maybe could text her, make sure she gets reconnected.
I'm being told that the meeting was stalled, so other people who were on here couldn't hear, we all froze to them.
Huh. It should, I'll come on here. At least for the recording, it should be okay, because I didn't have anything on my end freeze and my computers where we're recording the YouTube version for, so...
It was trying to reconnect.
Okay.
Can we take a three-minute recess to try to regroup here?
I think I might actually be able to pause the recording, although that makes me a little nervous, because I haven't had to do that one before. Oh, I think I see her in the waiting room.
Okay.
And there we go, she's coming in. And I will get you unmuted, Kim, where did you go? There you are. All right.
Hello?
There you are.
I cannot hear you.
Welcome back, can you hear that?
I can't hear anyone, I can't hear. I can't hear you. I'm speaking, I'm talking, can you hear me?
You can hear me.
I cannot hear you.
Perhaps Mr. Grim is correct, and we should take a short recess to get this sorted out.
President of Council, you want to call recess?
Yes, let's do that, please.
RJ, can you just mute us all and cut the video for a minute?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm deaf, I can't hear. Okay, okay, three minutes.
That's weird. Could be.
Check the bottom-left corner, okay, wow, okay, only 27 texts at a time. The bottom-left corner, it says that I'm speaking, and that's fine, and, you guys kidding me?
I'm sorry, I got everyone but me and you muted right now.
Check the bottom-left-hand corner, audio options, is your computer audio, oh, that's the right-hand mic, it was working a minute ago.
If it asks you to select a speaker, the recording resumed, can you still hear us, Kim?
Yes, I can, I don't know what happened.
Hey, you troubleshooting on the fly?
No, John, John.
All right, I'm hopping on.
All right. My question was, Bob, do we need to have, leave the Joint Rec Board on the agenda since it's not, we're not going to need it again for a while?
Well, for several months, we may not have a report. Councilmember Cloonan made a good point that they were, the group was hoping to reconvene in September, October, to make plans for the following year. I'll leave that up to the council, whether they would want that removed and then add it back in, or just leave it in place.
Okay, all right. Our junior council member could not join us this evening, I think everyone had his report. If you have any comments about his report, or if you have any comments for him, please forward those onto him. The ambulance authority?
Madam President, minutes were submitted, but prior to this meeting this evening, I was able to sit in on an ambulance authority board meeting, I'd like to just briefly report on that. The authorities actually met the last three weeks consecutively. Their situation is that serious, their meetings open every week with finance. Their call volume, gross charges, and their revenues are down 49 and 52% consecut, you know, concurrently right now since January, and they are preparing presentation and an update for all of municipalities. They should have that draft completed next week, and I just want to impress upon all the council members the seriousness of their financial situation, and I want you to know that they are doing everything within their power, I believe, to up their game and deal with the problem. So that concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
Are there any questions? All right, thank you, thank you for your report. MIDA?
This is Councilman Chuck Mazur. We attended a meeting on April 22. A draft of the minutes is in your packet of information. Any questions from anyone? Okay.
The sanitary authority?
Madam President, there are several minutes, meeting minutes packets included in everyone's package, and I'd like to just ask if there's any questions on any of that information, quite detailed.
It is quite detailed, yes. There's always a lot going on at the sanitary authority. Something needs fixed, something needs inspected, something needs all the time.
That concludes my report.
Cloonan, I do have a question for Councilman Kirk, please.
Yes.
I was just curious if the situation in the past several weeks with coronavirus has affected work with the sanitary authority. Have they had to make changes in their plans with what's going on, et cetera?
They have instituted protocols, all the recommended state and federal protocols, they're taking temperatures of the employees, they're staggering the work shifts, and they're working half-shifts to keep social distancing. They are disinfecting the vehicles daily, but, so they are running a lighter workload right now, lighter work schedule, but they are protecting the safety, the quality of the water in the town, I can assure you, and they have all the protocols and procedures in place to be certain that that continuity can be maintained for the town and for all the municipalities that they serve.
Thank you, I love seeing the trucks out, I'm glad to see them out, thank you.
You bet.
North Hills Council Governments.
Madam President, there was no meeting this month.
All right, thank you. Public Authority, Northland Public Library Authority.
Joanne Powers, January and February minutes are included in your packet, and I just want to mention that I spoke to Bob Lukic, who is the finance person over at the library, and he assured me that the companies that are working on the heating and air conditioning units are ready to go as soon as they release this restriction that they have now on people working. So they're ready to go, and they're close to being completed.
All right.
That concludes, that concludes my report.
I'm a little bit, as a user of the library, I'm a little bit excited about this automatic six-time renewal. I gotta tell you.
Well, they're working very, very hard to keep people, you know, continually using the library, and there are so many people telling, telling us that they are missing it so terribly, that I think the employees at the library are doing a tremendous job. So they're, I think they're doing all that they possibly can at this point.
All right, thank you. North Pittsburgh Community Development Authority, MIDA?
This is Chuck Mazur, there is no meeting this month.
All right, Personnel Board?
This is Carolyn Schweiger, there's no meeting this month.
Okay. Planning Commission, there was no meeting this month. Technology Committee?
No meeting this month, Madam President.
Thank you. Volunteer Firefighter Steering Committee?
No meeting this month.
Okay. Zoning Hearing Board?
No meeting this month.
Okay. All right, thank you for your committee reports where they were. Next month, it'll be all different. Hopefully, we'll be able to be successful with all of our Zoom meetings. I gave reports that I had with the announcements, and no correspondence at this town at this time. Bob, do you have anything that you want to add in to addition to the town manager's report that you submitted?
Just a couple of quick highlights, if I may. Work is progressing on two projects that are grant-funded through the multimodal grant programs regarding pedestrian mobility. One in the area of Route 92. One in the area of Route 19 heading towards the Oak Ridge Plan of lots that will make a connection there. And then the completion of the sidewalks along Grubbs Road to Ingamar. Those projects are moving forward despite all of the slowdowns regarding the COVID-19. Also, despite some of the issues that we've been facing, we've been able to complete the LED conversion of the lighting for the town hall. So that is now done and we should be starting to save money on our electricity. Lastly, through a multi-pronged approach, we're looking at various ways to address flooding situations in the Pine Creek watershed, working through the COG on a, an update of the watershed implementation plan with EPA and DEP, also working with the Army Corps of Engineers on some other initiatives regarding, regarding hazard mitigation. Lastly, working with some of our upstream neighbors in an effort to see what we can do about keeping stormwater flow condensed or controlled upstream of McCandless at this point. So multi-pronged approach that we will continue to undertake as we move forward.
All right, thank you. Were there any questions for the Town Manager on his report? Okay, Town Attorney's Report, I think that was confidential, but is there anything in addition? Mr. Solicitor, you want to add?
Madam President, I have nothing to add. If there's any questions, I'm happy to, I probably have to answer them offline. If there's anything publicly that I'm happy to try to address that now.
All right, all right, thank you very much. That moves us on to unfinished business. Is there a council member who would like to make that first motion?
Madam President, this is Bill Kirk. I would like to move to take action on ordinance number 1497, an ordinance amending the zoning district of certain property located at 8500 Thompson Run Road, also identified as block and lot number 717 J216, from C7 Office Building District to R3 Townhouse and Garden Apartment District, and amend the town's zoning map accordingly. A public hearing was held on March 9th, 2020, and was reviewed on April 13th, 2020.
Mr. Kirk, if I could just ask you to clarify, when you say move to take action, are you making a motion to approve?
I am making a, I believe that the action was tabled, so I thought I was moving to remove it from the table. But if, but if I may make a motion to move to approve, I would like to do that.
I think that would be appropriate.
Move to approve, thank you.
Is there a second?
Joanne Powers, I second that.
Okay. I'd also like to add that we allowed for five days of comments to be sent to, to the town and to council members following that public hearing in case anyone had comments they weren't able to get online or had additional comments to make. So having heard this motion and having a second, is there any comments from council?
Madam President, I'd like to thank staff for the work that they did and the information that they provided as to answer the questions that I had, particularly, and I know a number of other council members as well, to better understand the impact of the rezoning on the adjacent properties. And I, and I also appreciate the Trent Corporation report. I do have a couple of questions on this information, if I may. And I'm not sure if this is to our council or to our manager, but the information provided by the Trent Corporation on the usage of the current sites adjacent to this subject property rezoning indicate that they're overdeveloped for the change in zoning. I just want to clarify and be sure that all of that development and use will be protected and grandfathered if there's a, if this rezoning occurs.
Yes, it would be.
Okay. When I reviewed the setbacks from a R7, a C7, I'm sorry, to an R3, it had the, the impact that I was concerned that it would have in moving setbacks from one property to another. But one piece of very, very useful information that helped me to reconcile in my mind to, to consider supporting this was the historical points for the Thompson Run properties. And it was interesting to learn that the original properties were all zoned residential. And that in fact, both adjacent properties over time in both 1999 and then 1997 for the Temple property, both benefited greatly from rezonings of their property. And, and so after reviewing the map, reviewing the distances between the buildings, and I couldn't have made this decision without all of this, this information. I much appreciate it. I'm, I'm prepared to support this, this rezoning.
Are there any other comments or questions from council members?
This is Joanne. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go right ahead, Joanne. It's all right.
Joanne Powers, I just wanted to say how much those overlays helped with understanding the whole situation. Whoever did those did a tremendous job. Thank you very much.
This is Angela Woods. I just wanted to echo that same sentiment that the maps were very useful in considering this. And, and just like Councilman Kirk mentioned, the staff has been fabulous answering questions so that we feel like we'd be well prepared to make a decision on this. Thank you.
Are there any other, go ahead?
Councilwoman Clunin, I also want to repeat how, how much the extra information helped in my decision-making. Also, the fact that I did a little research just looking at the, the real estate transactions that have been happening in the area, as well as the fact that that property as a C7 property has been on the market for a long time. And I do think the residents of McCandless would like to see it put to a good use instead of us, another vacant building and knowing that it will be used for residential and not, instead of the unknown. And a lot of the people I've talked to have shared that sentiment. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for anyone about this? I'm a little concerned about, and it's not appropriate right now because we don't, don't have a site plan that we're approving. I am concerned about this becoming residential for fear that it is so close, it will not be able to main, have those buffers that we have put in residential. And my concern, which will have to be addressed when it comes to the reviewing the site plan, is that because those surrounding properties are right up on the property line, that the people who are buying these townhouses are not going to have adequate buffer for noise and lights and sound and all of those things. So I am concerned about that. And that's something I am concerned about. And I think that we'll have to address when we do a site plan. But I think residents deserve a buffer, buffer zone between commercial, residential and commercial. And I'm not sure how they're going to get adequate buffer there. I'm really not sure how that's going to happen. Any other comments?
Joanne Powers, I'm also concerned about the number of units that he is interested in putting in, but I know this is not the time.
Right.
To question us. So I'll have to wait until that comes through, but that will be my question.
Right, right. I, I, I agree with that also. Any other comments? All right. Hearing none. There's been a motion and a second time for comments. All those in favor, please indicate by saying, changing this zoning from C7 to R3, just in case we forgot what we were talking about. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a council member willing to make the second motion?
Madam President, Bill Kirk, I move to adopt ordinance 1498, an ordinance to authorize the conveyance of a right-of-way in Channel East End to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for drainage work to be performed along Rochester Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, that, that was Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments about this? This is a big, big project that PennDOT is, or that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is going to take over. It's going to be reconstruction of a shoulder. It's going to be an erosion prevention plan to protect the stream down there, drainage updates. They're estimating it's a million-dollar program, a million-dollar program. So with the landslide prevention and, and all of that. And frankly, I don't see that we can really use this. So I think that this is, would be a nice piece of property to give them. And, and appreciate the work that they're helping us by doing. Any other comments? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business? Is there anyone willing to make that motion under new business?
Joanne?
All right, go ahead.
Patricia Clunin, I move to adopt ordinance number 1499, an ordinance of the Town of McCandless, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, authorizing an extension of time for the filing of returns and the payment of business privilege tax for license year 2020 only, from May 15th, 2020 until July 15th, 2020.
Angela Woods, second.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this from council?
Madam President, I appreciate that we're giving everyone a little more time to get this sorted out this year.
Well said. Well said.
Joanne Powers, I fully agree with you.
Are there any other comments?
Patricia Clunin, in full agreement as well, especially with our efforts to attract and hold on to small business in our community. Doing things like this is imperative.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We seem to have forgotten on this agenda, any other new business? Is there any other new business?
Madam President?
Yes.
Under new business, I'd just like to, I'd like to thank the council members for all the work we've been able to do together. I'm announcing this evening that I will be turning in a formal letter of resignation this week to the council. It's, it's certainly with very heavy heart. Worked hard for this position and worked hard for the Ward Two and for the whole town. And I just really appreciate everyone's patience they've shown me as a young councilman. And, and thank you all again for your friendship and for your, your collegiality. It's been a very, very great experience. And, and I look forward to working with all of you in the future. No one knows what the future holds. Clearly, two years ago, none of us, two and a half years ago, none of us expected to be where we are today. But with that, I would just like to say thank you all.
Thank you.
Joanne Powers. Bill, I would just like to say that we are sorry to see you leaving. And we truly appreciate all the hard work that you've done for the Town of McCandless. And we wish you well in your future.
Thanks, Joanne.
Best wishes in your new position, Councilman Kirk.
Thank you, Angela. It's been a pleasure.
Councilwoman Clunin, I think through the years, I haven't always agreed with some of the things you've said or done. But at the same time, I know for sure that you had the best interest of our McCandless residents and the residents of Ward Two in your heart.
Thank you for that. Likewise, likewise for you. Thank you.
This is Chuck Mazer. Congratulations, Bill. And thank you for all the work that you've done over the last few years. Good luck to you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Congrats, Bill. I got an A cup for you.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Joanne Powers, the move.
Second, Chuck Mazer.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your patience with our technical difficulties. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, Bill. Take care.
Good night.
All right, wrapping now.